Hello and welcome to P Gurus channel. I am your host Sri Ayr. This is a very important session that I am hosting with Pandit Satish Kumar Sharma ji. We are going to talk a lot of things primarily about the incidents in Ladakh and also how this Black Lives Matter is playing out in the United Kingdom. There are some significant developments and I urge every one of our viewers to watch it till the end. Pandit ji, welcome to P Gurus channel.
Prenam Sri Ayrji, as always it's a pleasure to be here and let's crack on. A lot is happening and it's moving very, very fast. So let's jump straight in.
Absolutely Pandit ji and we are going to start with the fact that there was a telephone conversation between the External Affairs Minister of India, Sri S Jayshankar and his counterpart Wang Yi of China. And within thirty minutes of the conclusion of that conversation, Wang Yi sent out a text message which was sent to all his peers, meaning like the foreign ministers of many, many countries. And, and the message has some very interesting things where it alleges that India was the aggressor in this and that China unfortunately had to defend itself. Now, if you look at the buildup of Chinese forces and what has been happening over the past six weeks, it would suggest that it's the Chinese who have been massing on four different areas. And if you want to think about it, there is a, this is the Axaychin map. These are the areas where the Chinese have been massing. And to get a little bit more detailed look, I want to show you guys this. So here you see there are two lines. One is what India sees as its line of actual control and the other is the line where China sees as its line of actual control. And between these two lines, there's a small sliver of land. Now this supposed to be disputed and neither side is supposed to go into that one. And these are the areas that the Chinese have occupied. You can see here that China has come all the way to the edge of the Indian LAC. So what is the downside to that? Now, there is an airport which is the highest airport in the world, Dalati Bagh Oldi, sixteen thousand feet. And this is a very critical airport that India for the longest time did not build but now they have built it. It is operational, flights are taking off and landing now, everything is hunky dory. Except there's a small problem. The, the Chinese are so close to the airstrip that they can actually bring down any plane if they want to. But that is a huge concern. So they should pull back to their old positions prior to the April twentieth is what India is demanding. Now let's get back to this message. So this one came after the clashes where twenty Indian soldiers and up to forty-three and I think the number has also gone up because I'm not sure about the final number because I also read that ten soldiers of the Chinese army who were admitted in the ICU also died. So I don't know, it could be more than forty-three. And be that as, as it may, there is a higher amount of casualties on the Chinese side as compared to Indian side. So Satish ji, now after this message was sent out by the Foreign Minister Wang Yi, what did, what did the Indian counterpart do?
Well, firstly just a few words with regard to the loss of life. We have lost another group of incredibly brave and very, very talented members of our armed forces. The manner in which they have lost their lives is causing a great deal of discomfort here in the UK. You know, as a Hindu Indian community, we're just recovering from the trauma of watching the sadhus being lynched. And that really caused a great deal of discontent and concern here. And now to hear that this has happened, it's brought a lot of attention to it. So remember, India and the UK have got a fairly unique relationship and it's one which is filled with opportunities. And so we look at every opportunity for further engagement, for improving the relationships, for working together as a golden opportunity. And so from that point of view, I was quite interested to see how the Indo-British communications worked during what is obviously a very, very critical time. This little note went out from the Chinese Foreign Ministry. And as you say, it was sent from a mobile phone. Now China has a massive bureaucracy in the same way that India has a bureaucracy. China too has a bureaucracy. And yet this was sent out in such a short time period with such short notice, immediately out across the world. So there has to be some thought applies to why that was done. Now perhaps it's such a long time ago, but I've got vague memories of being at school where a naughty child, an unpleasant child, a bully or whatever would hit some other child and then go running to the teacher and say, ma'am, he hit me. You know, it's that sort of scurrying like mentality which knows the value of getting your press release out first. Now it would seem that China probably had this press release ready. And so the moment the conversation had concluded, a few cursory exchanges probably happened between the men on the ground and Beijing and bang, a few buttons pressed and that press release went out. The speed with which it was done is something that the Indian government really needs to take on board. It wasn't done lightly and the impact that it had strategically was probably a very powerful one. Remember in this day and age, the world is connected. There are investment deals, there are trade deals, there are security and joint exercises being planned. All of those things are going on all around the world at each and every moment. And so it's very important to be able to inform one's allies as to what's going on. As well as one's allies, it's very important to be able to inform one's potential enemies and get the rhetoric set. And so China established that straight away. It's a master stroke of political maneuvering. Here in the United Kingdom, I know for a fact that when this arrived, the Indian High Commission was approached, the MEA were approached and requests were made to have a briefing statement sent to them so that it could be included in conversations at meetings such as the Cobra Security Meetings that are held frequently. And ministers were wanting to be briefed so that they too could then brief the Prime Minister and brief other security committees. Nothing was forthcoming. It wasn't forthcoming. As far as I know, even after two days, a briefing statement had not been sent to India's allies saying this is our position, Foreign Minister to Foreign Minister, that sort of level. And that's absolutely vital. And popping something up onto a website, whatever is available for general release to the public is usually far removed from the communications that are sent minister to minister. And so I know that the United Kingdom senior politicians and ministers and decision makers and committees were actually waiting for some sort of briefing that they could then incorporate and act upon. This is vitally important.
I guess what you are saying without saying so and so many words is that having seen the other side establish a personal touch, the least India could do was reciprocate that and then beyond. And, and perhaps this is something that needs to be worked on, improved on on the Indian side. I'm sure they have good reasons for not doing so. For example, today, Mike Pompeo, Secretary of State of the United States, has come out with a very good statement saying that he is very saddened by the loss of twenty Indian soldiers.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, on their confrontation with China. See the word confrontation, he's not using Chinese aggression which would be the next level of, you know, it's taking it to the next level and he has not used that word. So he's also being careful. At the same time, he wants to say that my sympathies are more with the Indian side. So you, you now know, at least as a country, India knows that it's got some powerful friends and perhaps that, that personal touch. And Satish ji, you and I are not privy to all the things. It's perhaps possible. Perhaps possible that they did indeed talk and that these things were conveyed. Whatever it is, the fact is that the other side's narrative came out, however fake it may be, and India's side has not come out. So that's where I think we are suggesting and I mean, if you would like to add to that, please feel free, that perhaps India should still work on improving the messaging.
Yes, one thing we have noticed and we've commented upon slightly in the past is that the, the role of a political strategist is more important than ever before. In the past, India has had a plethora of civil servants given appointments in high commission ambassadorial roles. And that's fine in peacekeeping times, you know, it's great when there are trade deals to be done and student quotas to be negotiated, et cetera, et cetera. But at times like this, I think India really does need to have very, very capable political strategists appointed and not just appointed, authorized and empowered to make the plays as soon as the time and circumstances dictate. What I really hope isn't happening is that the decision-making tree is a very narrow one and that each and every decision has to go through to the top because people lower down are perhaps not yet capable enough, not yet entrusted enough to be able to make these decisions. And that's something that I'm absolutely certain Murti Sirgad will be, Murti ji and the administration will be wanting to try and rectify. We need to have the right people making the right decisions in the right places. And if they're not present within the administration, we've said this before. I don't think there's anything wrong. Most governments appoint special advisors to be able to advise them on issues where they don't have skills in-house. And I think the Indian government really should perhaps start to look at special advisors to escalate and to bring to activity skills in these areas. So fingers crossed, hopefully as the news comes out over the next few days, we'll find that their reticence and their reluctance to communicate what was going on was perhaps justified and that it wasn't just another case of bureaucracy not being able to respond quickly enough to a very, very quickly changing and very security critical set of circumstances.
And yeah, I hope so too. And Satish ji, I think the, the High Commissioner in England is going to be changing soon. And I think Gayatri Kumar is going to be the new Indian High Commissioner. Can you tell us a little bit more about what her background is and when she's going to be the new commissioner in United Kingdom?
That's a very potent question, especially since I've made semi complimentary remarks about civil servants. But my, my understanding is that Gayatri Kumar ji is actually a very capable and experienced political person from the EU. Her last posting was in Europe and the EU works on communications. It works on massive networks. It works on being able to produce policy documents and circulate them, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a very, very large organization. And we're really hoping that she will be able to bring some of those skills here. The UK is one of those postings which potentially has the capacity to be pivotal in global geopolitics now. And we do need people who can work to maximize the interests of both the United Kingdom and India. We have never had such good potential relationships, you know, we have a minister level now, people who are Indian origin. We have a Prime Minister who has a great deal of respect and appreciation for the Indian contribution in the UK but also India's role historically. He is a, remember he is a historian, he knows India's role in the civilizations of the world. So we've got a great opportunity to have fantastic relationships. And this opportunity really, we hope Gayatri ji will leverage and maximize.
Thank you Satish ji. The next topic that I would like to develop on is the movement of Black Lives Matter. In the United States, it's sort of now come to a bit of a control. Ever since the Antifa has been named designated as a terrorist organization, there has been some crackdown although it is not coming out of the news in a big way because now US has started looking towards the 2020 elections and suddenly, you know, a lot of polls are projecting Biden is going to win. So the focus of people has turned towards elections. So we don't have much of an update of BLM in the United States. I'm wondering how things are over at the United Kingdom because there's no election around the corner.
Well, it's, the ripple has gone out there. You know, when you drop a huge rock into a lake, suddenly you get ripples going everywhere. They reach the edges of the lake and then you get them coming back into the point that initiated the whole thing. So I think we're now at that stage where the energy that was sent out is now returning. The English public are actually, I think, turning now. They were initially sympathetic to the cause but they saw the cause being hijacked by forces which had clearly other agendas and they were just leveraging the suffering of black peoples around the world and especially in America for their political advantage. And not only that, some of the demands that were being made have bordered on the completely ridiculous. And we mentioned Keir Starmer bending the knee in the past and how we thought it was inappropriate. Only yesterday, Dominic Raab, who is one of the senior ministers in the cabinet, he made a remark that the only person I would bend the knee in front of is, I think, Her Majesty and my wife or something like that, you know, when I proposed to my wife, I bent the knee in front of her. But nobody else will, will I bend the knee in front of. Now that's a, that's a lovely way of putting it, isn't it? Right? It's quite humorous, it's very human and everything else. But the press on the left have really picked it up and been quite nasty and aggressive about it, et cetera. So it's almost that scope for human expression is, is, is beginning to disappear. And the average public, if you read the Twitter trends and the feeds, the majority of people are now saying, actually no, we're quite reasonable people in this country. We're not racist. So stop telling us we're racists. And the issue has moved away from institutionalized white supremacy, which is really what the black community were wanting to challenge, the power and authority of the state that seems to really fall very difficult, very harshly upon them. And so that's become a little bit confused. But there are also now commentators and I popped a question that if you feel that white people should all bend the knee and if that's the principle, then perhaps you're right in saying that black Africans should bend the knee in front of all of the Indians who had to flee from Uganda. Because there was, there were atrocities, it was a human rights disaster. And yet the principle is demonstrated as being grossly inadequate. It's not a valid principle. And it actually doesn't do the cause that much credit either. I think they, they should probably regroup, refocus and then start to seize the momentum that's been given to them in very legitimate ways. And we've just now heard that the Cecil Rhodes statue in Oxford, the Chancellor and the senior administrators have voted to remove it. But now it will go in front of panning officers to see whether it can be removed and what's involved in removing it and all that sort of bureaucracy will take, take place. But the other thing is that it's spilt over into lots of other areas where really nobody had anticipated that it would go.
Yes, indeed. And I was going to, you know, touch upon that. The last conversation we had, we had talked about how people were demanding that the statue of Gandhi in the heart of the Indian community at Leicester be also removed because somebody was saying that he was a racist too and so on and so forth. Where do things stand as far as that is concerned?
Well, that too has taken a life of its own. And as I think I mentioned to you, a petition was launched and it wasn't, I don't believe it was a government petition. It was just on one of these petition websites demanding this. And the people who launched that were of questionable credentials. I think we touched on it in our last conversations.
Yes.
And in fact, some of the initiators now have locked their Twitter handles and seem to be disappearing into the background. But the damage has been done because what has happened is that the local metropolitan authority, the council of that particular area, have agreed that this item should appear on the agenda and to be voted upon. Now this is a huge development because firstly, it should never have been on the agenda in its current form. You know, we would have expected our Labour councillors, remembering it's a labour controlled environment there, we would have expected them to have challenged the very principle of allowing this option to go, this agenda item to go on to the agenda. It shouldn't have been there. But now that it is there, it's looking as though a vote will be cast. And if my reading of the circumstances and the power profile on that committee is correct, I, I think it's got every chance of going through. And so if that is approved at council, then we could well see Gandhi ji statue statue being removed from the heart of Leicester's Indian community.
That would be ironic, isn't it? I mean Cecil Rhodes, we all know what kind of a plunderer he was. And then here is Mahapagandi who learned his politics in South Africa. And, and at that time, you know, he had taken everyone other than the whites along with him. And whatever he had done benefited the local population too. So this is something where, you know, when, when these things happen now, you have this new family of professional protesters who will join and jump on any cause. They are being funded by people who have a lot of money to throw around just to keep the pot boiling. And, and it seems like a lot of taxpayer money of Leicester is being, going to be spent in debating and then passing this resolution, which means nothing. I mean, I'm speaking from experience. Three city councils in the United States have passed resolutions condemning the CA law. And I can only tell you, these are educated illiterates. I mean, I, I say that with full responsibility. The three-page resolution, they can't even read. They don't understand the history of India. And, and you know, this is just somebody with, you know, a campaign funding dangling in front of them saying that you do this and I'll give you so much. I'm not saying that happened, but it smacks of that. So.
Well, we're quite concerned because one other thing that's really been brought into center stage is the lack of political influence that we as British Hindus and Indians wield. There was a Labour MP called Naz Shah who tweeted, she sent a remark out which said that the poor girls who had suffered at the hands of predominantly Pakistani Muslim grooming gangs should shut up in the, in the interests of diversity. Okay. And that's such a horrific, unpleasant statement to make. But she is now on the front bench in the Labour Party. Okay? Nobody has questioned that, hang on a minute, there's a community cohesion issue here. What about inter-community traditional relationships? Aren't they going to be harmed by such a mischievous petition? None of that's happening and it's not happening because the Hindu voice is actually deemed to be pretty much insignificant. You know, our capacity for bearing pain and nonsense seems to be working against us. And I really think it's time that our friends in Leicester woke up to this fact and started to exert some sort of political focus. It's a terrible indication of the future of what's to come. If a mischievous petition can be thrown up and result in the removal of the statue of one of India's most active freedom fighters as well.
And I can tell you, Satish ji, from just looking at what played out in the city of Seattle and also in St Paul, that once they realized what was going to happen, there was a lot of demonstration, there were a lot of demonstration, a lot of work. We have written articles in P Gurus hoping to let, help them see reason, see their way clear through a lot of the mud that was created by the other side. And yet the councils in both these situations, they had zero dissenters, zero. In, in, in Seattle, it was a five-zero with three not abstaining from voting. In St Paul was much worse, seven-zero. And what I was shocked to see was there was a couple of people who were of Asian American origin who should know a little bit more about the sensitivity of this issue. They could have abstained if not, I mean, so what, long and short of it is, there are purse strings that are being dangled. That's the only way I can, you know, interpret this. There are organizations much better organized than you and I. We are our individual, you know, enthusiastic people who see, we can clearly see the game that is being played by the other side. But they have amidst them professionals who are doing this twenty-four seven. You and have, you and I have other things to do. This happens to be something that we are passionate about because there is a lot of Adharma that is going on right now. And that's what we are against. And, and understand this is completely against the dharmic values that we were all raised in. It doesn't mean that just because you wouldn't go in front of a Murthy every day and did puja that, that makes you dharmic. You are a Sanatani, you have always been a Sanatani. And I really, really hope and pray that, you know, this won't lead to the point where even United Kingdom is going to bring down the statue of Gandhi. He doesn't deserve this. I may have disagreements with the way he conducted the politics at that time but he was far and above, you know, you know, most leading statesman of his time.
Well, it's going to be a, a very significant indictment of Leicester's Hindu Gujarati community. If as a community, probably the number two most powerful, most affluent, well-established community in the United Kingdom, if they can't manage to come together to protect one statue of probably one of the two or three most important influential Gujarati leaders, right? Then that is a serious concern, isn't it? And we have on the, we have on the Indian-Chinese-China border, we have our Jawans sacrificing their life to protect the national boundary and in service of the flag. And yet, you know, it does worry me a little that in Leicester, we have the, perhaps the inability to even defend a single statue. The opportunity to act is still there but the option of not acting, the option of not politically engaging, that disappeared a long time ago. You and I have been talking about this for a long period of time. The Hindu community really does need to get its act together and understand that politics is not a casual spare time activity that you respond to in as and when you feel that something is a problem. No, you have, we have to be fully engaged in the public life of this country and especially the political life.
Yes, indeed. And Satish ji, with your permission, I'd like to say that one of the topics that we will be discussing in the future episodes is the fate of Gujaratis who are forced to flee with their, just their clothes from Uganda. What sort of treatment they receive despite having overseas British passports in, of the United Kingdom? And how many of them had to transplant themselves to the United States? And also what happened to the Hong Kong overseas British passport holders? I, I just want to set this context because there is a lot of stuff that we can learn. And I think Gujaratis who have gone through and survived all these things, remember you have to speak up for yourself. I mean, as Indian, I feel ashamed that, you know, this, this kind of thing is even being contemplated. And that too on basis of a change.org petition, that is ridiculous. Any idiot can, you know, dream up anything. What is the Leicester City Council smoking for God's sake? I'm, I'm really, really surprised that they would not even look at how many of their local constituents have actually signed. I can understand it if there was a signature campaign done with the name and their address and their contact details, like an email and a phone number so that you can randomly check and, you know, verify the veracity of this claim, that I can understand. This is nonsense in my opinion, sir.
You know, we have to bear in mind that in this country, we have had this problem with grooming gangs.
Yes.
The government and our Sajid Javid, who was the former chancellor, assured the nation that a report would be done, it would be comprehensive and that report would then be published and the public interest protected. So this was at the highest level. The report was produced and the government has not yet released that report. There are lots and lots of people very unhappy about the fact that it hasn't been released. A petition was produced on the government's website and this petition went to over, I think, a hundred and thirty thousand people signed this petition which demanded the release of this report. And so the government has a petitions committee, they're required then to act. And they have also said, we should now do something and publish this report. This report still has not come out. It's not seen the light of day even though a hundred and twenty thousand people raised a government petition. And so for four or five thousand people to have raised some sort of a petition and for it to then appear on the agenda to be voted upon by a municipal council, this is, you can see the dichotomy here.
Yes, indeed. And the good people of United Kingdom have a right to know the truth of what happened during these grooming gangs episodes. And I fully support your idea, sir. And here's a shout out to the Boris Johnson government. I think you need to release this report particularly because I hear that the Boris Johnson government is planning on constituting a new commission to look at the issues being raised by the latest Black Lives Matter movement. And I'm hoping that there will be good representation of the Hindu community in that commission.
Well, you're very well informed. In fact, it has been announced, the committee has been announced, a chair has been appointed. It's a lady called Munira Mirza, I think. And she is a policy lead within Number Ten and her work in the past has actually been very good. We're looking forward to her producing and selecting a team which is going to genuinely reflect and respond to all of the concerns. Now her appointment has already raised the hackles on the left. She's not, she's an Oxford graduate and so there are many things about her which are not ethnic enough, shall we say. You know, it's another case of. You know, it's another case of a brown person not being victim enough for the left. And so she's already attracting a huge amount of negative press. But I think you rang a warning bell in a very timely fashion. We mentioned that Keir Starmer's B A M E committee completely ignored the fact that there were no Hindus invited to that committee, right? We just weren't even present there, and we raised quite a bit of a stink about it. I think it would be very disappointing if this new commission makes the same mistake. We have a very significant contribution and a capacity to contribute a diversity of opinion as opposed to a diversity of pigmentation. And that diversity of opinion that we can contribute should really be respected. So I'm looking forward to seeing more competent and prominent people contributing from our own community on this committee, and I'll keep you informed.
Thank you very much, Satishji. And that brings us to the end of this episode. And a shout-out to all our viewers, please do consider donating to our website. You have been sending a lot of donations, and we appreciate it from the bottom of our heart. And we would also like you to subscribe to our channel. Even about sixty percent of the viewers are not subscribers. And those of you who do subscribe, you will get notified of our videos as and when they get published online, and that saves you a lot of time. And then you can choose whether you want to watch it or not, that's completely up to you. But instead of you seeking out the videos, you will be notified when the new videos come. So as always, Panditji, it's a pleasure talking to you, and we'll be back with more such interesting conversations.
Sriji Pranamji, and thank you very much for the opportunity, and best of luck over in America. And hopefully, the heat will be taken out of the B L M movement, and we'll get wiser heads starting to contribute and come to the forefront as well. So be safe and stay well, and hopefully, we will talk again soon. Pranamji, mustay.
Namaskar.